Good evening. I'd like to call the November 4th, 2022 Calhoun County meeting. My John would give us that.
Yes, sir. Corporate presence for giving thanks, but just ask you guys to this meeting, you will sound judgmental. They're carrying out the business of the people of Calhoun, but they're good and they're relevant. We pray Christ have amen.
A motion for approval of the agenda?
So much.
I'll probably move the second. I only favor I.
I.
Hold the white wire as I have it. First one, the agenda we have. Public comments on the agenda. Dr. Tolan? That's okay.
We're just taking the role and make sure you were here.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, Doc, we'll be back with you.
Okay.
All right, we have no more comments on the agenda. One other matter is the waste act.
Good evening, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure. On October tenth, you gentlemen voted unanimously to approve the purchase of a fire truck for Sandy Run Station in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. That truck, that quote was good until October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. We had twenty-one days as a county to order that truck. We failed to do so. We now have a new quote from that supplier to order that same truck at a cost of five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's a difference to Calhoun County of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. I'd like to ask why in twenty-one days as a county, we couldn't, after you gentlemen voted unanimously to order this truck, we couldn't get that truck ordered? And where does twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars is coming from? I'm being told that it's just being magically taken from another grant, and maybe that's fine. But if so, we have a lot of departments in this county that could have used twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars to do things with, to help this county instead of just wasting the money because we failed ordering a truck in twenty-one days that we had to do it.
Yeah, I could have used that myself.
I, I understand.
But uh, let, let, let me just tell you, are we not going to comment on that?
I know you're not.
I'm going to turn that over to the, uh, the commission.
I, I don't know. I would just like the next.
They'll, they'll, they'll. They'll meet with the fire commission and we'll bring your answer back the next time.
That's fine. I don't think this has to do with the commission. I think this has to do with county just.
Well, that's, sir, that's what you think, but we appreciate you, but that's what we're going to do. We're going to turn that over to you.
No problem.
Thanks. Spilling.
Fellow. Two things, and I know you don't like two things, but sir.
One, one thing, sir. One, one thing. That's a rule, I mean, just.
That's fine.
All right.
The last time I was here, I spoke to you about setting the council meeting times, places to meet on the second and for Mondays of each month. I mentioned that we need to rotate meetings, involve everybody in Calhoun County. If you remember correctly, the best attended meeting was at Beulah Church last year for zoning. What I'm asking is, I noticed it's not on the agenda, but I would still like to know why we can't have rotating locations for the meetings, including Sandy Run, Cameron, Lone Star, wherever. Thank you.
Okay, sir, we normally don't ask, sir, but I can tell you right now, as long as I'm chairman, I will not be for rotating meetings. We simply have all our stuff down there at the office, our staff. We have people coming in to make appearances and stuff like that. And, you know, we've been doing this for forty years, and I don't know any other council that will rotate meetings like that. Planning commission was a different thing. That was something that involved that particular area. And I think that's why they did that. But anyway, as long as I'm chairman, I will not entertain a motion to do that, I can tell you. But thank you. Okay. No other comments, no public hearing? Uh, motion for approval of the minutes, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two? Any further discussion? Only favor I.
I.
Hold the white wire. Any committee report? Ken, you want to make a little report on that?
Um, we had, the recreation committee had a, what day was that? Monday last week.
Thursday last week.
Thursday last week, we had a kind of catch-up meeting where we were informed of everything going on in our different location. Started up at Hayward, uh, the new Hayward Park, uh, came down. I mean, everything's happening in Sandy Run, including the walk, walking track, uh, update on that, where we stood on that. Uh, update on the recreation, the prior recreation area, ball field or whatever in Sandy Run. Also on what is going on there. If you happen to, even, you might be able to leave here tonight and arrive by and see that the trees have been cleared. Probably have been cleared by now, all on the new, uh, uh, recreation complex. If you want to run by there and see how, what's, basically what size we're going to be developing out there. I think you're right, Richard.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, um, like I said, which is a kind of a, 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 a briefing type meeting. So we did do that last Thursday.
Yeah, thank you. Any other committee report?
No.
Uh, Cecil, I think you had reached on that committee, the fire.
Yeah.
Reach over here for the fire again, give us a way, what's going on with that.
You have to take care of it.
Thank you.
Far enough.
You can load a smartphone?
Three minutes.
About now.
Any appointments?
Just finished.
Yeah, you got to go.
This is for the historical commission. I think we've gone sometime unfortunately, but those think, and so I have two points for that. First one is Angela Cover Matthews. These both are my district, of course. And the other one is Margaret Nelson. Those are my two.
You want to make, give that formal motion?
Yes, sir. Um, not, uh.
Do you want to open one tab if you like?
Yeah, just make a motion with these two ladies to the historical commission of our town.
Are you giving the names again?
Angela Cover Matthews.
Angela Matthews.
Cover.
Cover Matthews. And, and Peggy now.
Well, officially she's Margaret.
I second it.
Any further discussion on that? Only favor I.
I.
Hold the white wire as I have it. Any more appointments? Uh, no proclamations? Okay, Doc, you got your minutes now. Dr. Tolan?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Richard's staff, thank you for the opportunity to just give you a quick update about what's happening in, at the college. So back in June of this year, I began my eleventh year as, as president. And I just, I want to thank council for the continued financial support that we received, uh, from both Orangeburg and Calhoun. Uh, it's meant a lot to us, and it's allowed us to do a couple of things. One of which is to engage in several campus projects, so I'll talk about those three very briefly. Uh, the first is the K Building, so when we built the new nursing building, and council was supportive of that project as well back in, uh, two thousand twenty. We vacated the old nursing building, and the plan now is to renovate that space to accommodate our health science programs, Rad Tech, physical therapy assistant, uh, CNA, patient care technician, which includes, uh, EKG and, uh, blood pressure. So that project will, will cost us somewhere around four million dollars. We plan to begin that renovation hopefully in, uh, fall of twenty, summer of twenty-three. Uh, the other is the machine tool technology classroom has existed in that same space to some degree with the same equipment since the nineteen eighties. So we received two million dollars from the delegation to renovate that space. And they'll be in the T, the T building, which is in the back, the backside of the access road. Uh, and that, I mean, if you know anything about manufacturing, that's kind of the bedrock of manufacturing, being able to machine and make parts. So it's the best thing they can do. To hopefully grow that enrollment and expand that program. Uh, the third is the S Building Cafe, which was, um, kind of an open space. We would allow some functions in there for the public. We have some events for campus, but, but quite frankly, there is no place on campus for students to go into. Classes, and, and the research is pretty clear, the longer students stay on campus, the more likely they are to, to be retained and persist and ultimately graduate. So, uh, that learning commons area will be coming out of the public space. And we'll put that in the hands of, of our students. We had our Fine Line and Foods event, um, a couple of weeks ago at the county library. Folks are accustomed, haven't ever been on campus. Um, but I think that that space is better used, allowing our students to be able to congregate academically with one another as supportive of their overall achievement. We are slowly but surely, um, advancing our new programs, the advanced EMT, which John has been asking about for years. Uh, we've gotten some regulatory approval for that, so we hope to be able to have that underway in the fall of twenty-three. Uh, we're also planning to offer an HVAC degree program. Uh, those folks are in high demand, I think in July and August, and, and probably around, I guess, November, if it's cold now, November, December, January. But it's an opportunity, I think, for us to expand the programs of leaving good jobs and great careers for, uh, Orangeburg and Calhoun County residents. The third one is somewhat of a, of a twist on, uh, allowing folks to work from home. We partnered with, with Google to offer some career, Google career certificates. And there are four options that they offer, and, and they sell this, so we're selling this as you can make Silicon Valley money and still live in Orangeburg and Calhoun County. So these are project management jobs, IT support jobs, user experience type jobs that allow residents in this region to, to make fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, but be able to do that from the compounds of their home. So that, that's just another option we're providing for students. One of the things we are learning very quickly in this, um, in this environment is that students are making the choice to go to work as opposed to going to school or going to work and going to school at the same time. So part of our shift and the way we do business is to come up with shorter-term credentials that lead to entry-level work in hopes that they will get employed and continue on in the workforce and along with us if they advance in their career. Uh, which leads me to the next thing. We are, we're still in a position to offer tuition free to Orangeburg and Calhoun residents. We have not quite seen the demand, um, in terms of our enrollment growing when we offer free tuition, but it is still an option that we provide to residents as long as they take six credit hours. They are South Carolina residents and don't have any kind of felony conviction. So that's, that's, I think, an added bonus for being able to come to a technical college, not only to prepare you for successful careers, but you can do it at almost no cost. And I, I wanted just to share some, some data with you that, you know, we, we have about twenty percent of our students are still in high school. We call it early college. They're, they're duly enrolled is the term that we use. And I shared some data with the superintendents, and I think, I thought you might find this interesting. Uh, over the course of the last three years, one point eight million dollars in tuition savings to, to parents and students. So you can think about that in kind of two buckets. One is we don't charge tuition for those early college students, so they get that education for free. But they're also beginning a pathway to getting a college degree, whether that's with a two-year or a four-year institution. And so they're advancing at no cost. So we have instances where students are graduating with an associate's degree, and then the next week graduating from high school. But at a minimum are at least finishing the first year of college at no cost. Uh, ten thousand credits earned, uh, this past year. Seven hundred and six students served across the two counties. And the largest demographic that we've served have been, um, African-American, African-Americans and, and Africans. Oh, the average fourteen credits earned per student. So that's somewhere around the first semester. Uh, the last thing I'll share with you is, is what I see on the horizon for, for the college and in this community. Uh, we are seeing a significant amount of, of industrial prospect activity. And so in anticipation of that, I've asked the delegation for a twelve million dollar, uh, below-the-line request. And it's on top of the eight million that we received this current year. So twenty million dollars focused on three broad areas of electric vehicles. So that's the, the production and manufacturing of the batteries, the installation and pair of the charging stations, and also the maintenance of the electric vehicles. So we have some semblance of those programs already, so we're not necessarily creating new programs, but we are creating, I think, some embedded certificates that care students for what I think is going to be transformational for South Carolina in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. You're saying y'all will make that transition. BMW in that state is making that transition, and, uh, Mercedes Sprinter van in, uh, Dorchester County is making that transition as well. So, good or bad, it, it just is, there's a transition to electric vehicles, and, and the colleges, I think, trying to stay ahead of the curve in terms of being able to provide the graduates, they have the skills to be able to perform that work. That's all I have, and certainly entertaining the questions that you might have.
You want to have any questions, Dr.?
I might, I might, I might. Excuse me. Uh, Workwood, Dr. Tolan, it's been a couple of years, Oakwood students, and, and we can't help this, and that, they promote tech. It's been really a blessing to this community, to be truthful with this. It's, um, I, I love, and outside tanks in general have, have been a blessing to their communities. Uh, people don't realize, I don't think, of the mo, movement now in the job market away from a four-year degree towards more of a technical-oriented degree. And, um, I think that y'all have done a wonderful job of getting students ready to go out into the work world, um, and, and make a good living. Back to your intel, uh, I think it was right interesting that we went back fifteen years ago. I met with the head, head of intel at Columbia. And at that time, um, he told us that they had, they were moving their office from Columbia, their Columbia location to California. And when they told all of their technical people that they would have to move to California, people said, we're not moving. So what they did was they allowed them to stay.
Sure.
And they would fly them like once, once or twice a month to California for a, for a meeting. But they weren't writing to Columbia because they'd be, they're in demand, and that intel is more, no, we can't lose these people. So, uh, like I say, it's, it's a big plus having y'all in the community. Um, I know my, my own children, plus all the schoolchildren that I've dealt with that went through. I think people don't realize, but in, uh, you know, I see, and I've had in my family as well, people get it, um, oh, I've been accepted at Clemson. You say, oh, well, what you're in? Well, I'm in the bridge program. Actually, you've been accepted at Tri-County Technical College. You're not accepted into Clemson University until you finish your first year or second year, whatever. And so, um, it's just a way, like, everybody's fighting for the dollars. I think Clemson is fighting for the dollars because they let, they get the dorm fee and the, and the football ticket fees and all that stuff, just like you're Clemson students, but you're a Tri-County Technical College student, is what you actually are. So people need to realize that, and I think that everybody's fighting for those dollars, they come, come with no bodies. So, um, y'all doing a good job, and thank you for that, always.
Doc, thank you as usual.
Thanks for your support, and, uh, have a good day.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kenny Benson, Hayward Community Development Alliance, Hayward Community Park.
Well, good evening.
Evening.
Um, I'm not sure how much time I have, but I, I want to start by doing some acknowledgements and trying to present as best I can, uh, the relationship with Calhoun County and Hayward Community Park. Um, I want to, I want to thank, uh, some people in the church, uh, that have been vital, uh, to this process. Bishop in South Carolina, Bishop Samuel Green. Our presiding elder in the Williams District, Reverend Dr. Charles Young. Pastor at Hayward Amy Church, Reverend Moses in Remberg. Uh, to our South Carolina District ninety-three representative, um, Representative Russell I. Really want to acknowledge him. To the Calhoun County Council, Mr. Jamie Taylor. And the Calhoun County Council. To the awesome staff that we've had the pleasure of working with. Mr. Tyrone Dassler, Mr. John McLaughlin, Ms. Carolyn Jackson, and Mr. Zachary Tarr. We look forward to our working, continued working relationship with these individuals and the others. And to the, the Hayward Community Development Alliance Board, I say greetings. It is with great joy and excitement that I bring greetings to you from the Hayward Amy Church family. Where our doors swing wide open on open hinges. One of my favorite quotes is, alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much more. On December nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, under the pastoral leadership of Reverend Dr. Harold Lee Conyers, the Hayward Amy, Hayward Amy Church in conjunction with our five oh one C three, the Hayward Community Development Alliance, closed on the former Carolina Eastman Park and renamed the park the Hayward Community Park. No one of the words in, in our, um, alliance, community. In our vision statement for the alliance, one of our goals was to bring the park back to the community for recreation. We did the best we could for almost ten years, but at the end of the day, realization set in that we're not meeting our goals for the community at home. Access was limited. Maintenance was being done by only a few faithful members. And we were not able to do many upgrades. Summer months were better than winter months, but still only accessible for shelter rentals to Hayward and other church events. We were falling short of our goal for the community of Calhoun County and surrounding areas. On numerous occasions, Mr. Dassler came to us to discuss partnership with Calhoun County. We would listen and send him away. Ladies and gentlemen, persistence finally paid dividends. Because Mr. Dassler and his staff finally got our ear, and here we are today. On Friday, October the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, we officially, with our ribbon-cutting ceremony, opened the park. The community can now come out and enjoy this beautiful piece of property named the Hayward Community Park. It was a proud day for Hayward. The Hayward Community Development Alliance Board and Calhoun County. So we want to spread the word that the park is open and accessible to all to enjoy. We pray that Calhoun County and surrounding communities will be able to, to enjoy the park for many years to come. Thank you, Calhoun County, and specifically Mr. Dassler. We could not have envisioned a better partnership. Lastly, coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success. Thank you so much.
Any type?
Everybody have any questions, uh? Benson, we look forward to working with y'all in the future. We appreciate everything. Thank you. Just want, just like to give the, uh, councilmen in that area, I think, a great job, they also do real good situations. If you didn't have that mark on. Uh, Dr. Walter, you lost the man. I don't want to admit you because you do too much for us, not for me. If you have anything you'd like to, like to share with us.
No, sir. Always a pleasure to be here, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you have the resolution. Revolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-two, the revolution, and appreciation of outstanding public service by Gregory Wilson. Wilson, would you please come forward? We appreciate what you've done, uh, down here with the veterans. Everybody loves you. You're here, you know we're here, and you said you go, we tried to, tried to entice you to stay, but you didn't stay, uh, but you worked for the town, so I'm glad you're here. I'm sure they appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, we have appreciation of outstanding public service by Greg, Gregory Wilson. Calvin County, South Carolina, Revolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-two. We have Gregory, Gregory Wilson was appointed by the Calvin County Legislative Delegation to the position of County Veteran Service Officer from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two. And whereas Greg Wilson has since represented Calvin County with great honor, and whereas Greg Wilson has shown outstanding dedication and services to the veterans and their families of the county. And whereas Greg Wilson has worked numerous hours and committed outstanding community service, acting as the veteran service officer for the county. And whereas Gregory Wilson unwaveringly committed willingness and ability to understand and respond to the concerns for the veterans and their families of Calvin County, admitted substantial contribution to the betterment of Calvin County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Calvin County Council does now hereby commend and thank Gregory Wilson for his dedication, enthusiasm, and outstanding public service given to Calvin County. Thanks a lot, Greg.
Thanks, sir.
Just to let everybody know, Pete is still keeping up with that sense of, of community engagement and still helps, uh, Robin Rucker, our new Veterans Paris Coordinator, works a few hours, um, with some existing clients. And he continues to help us, just not on a full-time basis. We, we thank him for that as well.
Okay, no old business? Nothing on the new business? Ordinance twenty, twenty-two, day twenty-three, for agreement, uh, ordinance amending the building codes and regulations. Rich, you want to elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yes, sir. So, uh, about every three years, the state updates us on the building codes that we use to issue permits and do inspections, and, uh, January one of two thousand twenty-three, we'll be moving from the twenty eighteen, uh, series of codes to the new one, uh, series of codes. Nothing really extraordinary about it. There are a lot of changes, um, that happened. The majority of them, uh, at the state level were taken out of the code. Actually, the Home Builders Association works pretty strong, uh, with the state legislative, uh, group to approve all of the changes that then get passed down. So, uh, the intent, uh, since about two thousand from the state level was to have everybody be on the same code. So, uh, we don't, don't do anything different than any other jurisdiction in, in the state. Uh, so pretty good drive.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Now we're down in the middle of the speech, Rich.
We gotta hear a first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just to check about how moved we get a first reading to order twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Yeah, I'm second.
Second.
Probably moving second any further to go. Hold it be a lie.
I.
Hold the white wire as I have it. Holy favor, I.
Aye.
Press, they have any questions? We'll be, uh, coming back out of the executive session. We probably won't be breaking any action, but we'll take the questions at that time. I got a big session brought that down. More support, Jim.
It's all good.
Second. About to move to second. Any further discussion? Holy favor, I.
Aye.
Holy favor, I have had it. If you got some questions or something, actually, I think you can contact them.
Yeah, I've had a few discussions with people. I mean, just to clarify me on this sheet about the final disposition of two sixty-seven, is that still in question or something? Because I was hoping I'll discuss with my, uh, yeah. But you guys go pursue this committee. That's fine.
Committee, you need to go to committee first. Okay, nothing on the administrative. Now we down to, uh, executive session. Uh, we see, uh, under executive session, uh, we got receipts of legal advice, contract to a matter of matter, Paradise Lake grant application, and economic development matter.
Chairman, how move we go into executive session to receive legal advice or contracts or matter regarding Paradise Lake grant application and, and economic development matter?
About to move to second. Any further discussion? Holy favor, I.
Aye.
Press, they have any questions? We'll be, uh, coming back out of the executive session. We probably won't be breaking any action, but we'll take the questions at that time. I got a big session brought that down. More support, Jim.
It's all good.
Second. About to move to second. Any further discussion? Holy favor, I.
Aye.
Holy favor, I have had it. Thank you. Press, got anything to give it for, Richard, then?
Hey, Richard, uh, I just have one question and it's super simple. How much is the county administrator authorized to transfer from fund to fund without council approval?
There's no limit.
There's no limit?
There's no limit.
That's under council administrator, right? Not council form of government?
It's set, if there's a limit, it's set in ordinance. If there is not an ordinance setting a limit.
Okay, thank you.
Because theoretically, we don't have to wait on the next council meeting. He can go ahead and get his truck ordered?
Yeah. Okay.
Was there a reason it wasn't ordered and that quote expired? I mean, it just sat on a desk?
And I don't have an exact answer for that. It is complicated, but, you know, it happened, um, you know, it was a mistake. It's bad to happen, but, you know, I can't, we're all human. Everybody makes mistakes. It's a very bad, you know, it's a bad outcome. Unfortunately, the state was able to, um, have it. Um, the state has some additional money because of inflationary costs, things like that with USDA and CBPG. So we're able to, you know, cover it without the additional cost to taxpayers.
But couldn't that money have been reallocated to a different item and it's kind of costing the taxpayers indirectly?
I don't know if it could have been allocated to a different item or not. That's a USDA or CBPG.
Right.
Question. I don't think anybody's happy with the capital.
Because normally when council approves something, don't they go ahead and move on it really quick?
It might be an issue, but it ain't.
It's a two separation. It's a two separate thing.
I, again, I'm not, I, I just want, we just trying to get some answers so he can get the truck ordered and.
We are doing everything we can to get the truck ordered, just like all the rest of the equipment that we order.
I'm kind of curious about that, um, budget line item that a, a county administrator can move unfettered money and restructure the council budget without council approval. It doesn't seem right.
Well, there's, there's certain limitations there. I mean, I understand you looking for something writing, but, I mean, anything that, that's a substantial amount of money, obviously, they're going to report. It's just defining what that amount is. And I think that's the question. Probably go beyond me that needs to be addressed. So.
Couldn't he initially restructure the council approved budget that's filed at the courthouse every year if unfettered transfers occur? I mean, that's.
That's probably a legal question.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Would this be the turney? Hi.
I think if you wanted to submit that question, we can get you.
Okay. Thank you.
We can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
There are, there are rules and, and there are constraints in place, obviously. But, um, I don't think the limit that, that you're looking for, there, there is a one there.
Okay.